Good afternoon and welcome. Today is Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. And we are here in our Commissioners Conference Room for a work session on overview of the 2025 revised and 2026 proposed budgets. I am Laramo County Commissioner Joey Scheid-McDally, Chair Pro-Tam. I'm chairing the meeting today. Our Chair Commissioner Stevens is off doing some National Associate Counties work. I'm also, but I am joined by my colleague, Laramo County Commissioner John Kofalas and our County Manager, Lorraine De Volker. And I just want to take a moment just saying thank you to Lorraine and her team, especially the people getting ready to present and all the department heads and staff who have worked for months and weeks on this budget and done a lot of collaboration and innovation. And I just wanted to say, well done and lots of kudos to everyone. But we'll turn this meeting over now to Matthew Bahunin, our Budget Team Lead. Did I get that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, great. Thank you, Matthew. Take it away.
Thank you, Commissioners. This has been a long, long road this year, building the 2026 proposed budget. It really started back in February. We updated our forecast and saw that we had a gap to overcome. So we had a department, department heads meeting where the county manager challenged the department directors and elected offices to come up with $6 million in general fund savings. We did not do cross-the-board reduction targets. We didn't give department-specific numbers other than that overall goal to rebalance our budget. So we'll walk through the calendar and we'll, we'll talk about what we did over this past year. We'll talk about the economic environment we're in and the fiscal factors that we're facing. We will review all of the key decisions, including the service proposals, reduction proposals, other savings that were identified. We will give a big-picture overview of the budget, the actual numbers altogether, and then show a general fund balance projection that we often show of the reserves, projected future reserves over the next 10 to 12 years, and also the opportunities for public feedback to date and through the end of the year.
Fantastic. If I could pause you just a second, take you back about a minute or so into your presentation where you said a gap was identified. Could you briefly, I know you're going to probably talk it further, but for the beginning of the meeting, can you talk about, that is not a budget that we had a control over. So if you could maybe take a brief moment to explain what, how that gap happened, and I know you'll go through it later, but can we just address that right now?
Yeah, so the county is required by state law to adopt a balanced budget every year, and we have, and we, we will next year, too. And so when we talk about a budget gap, we look at our forecast regularly, at least once a quarter. And after the results of the special session from last year's, last fall with, related to property taxes, we were, the new state law had a growth cap in property tax revenue that, that was set at 10 and a half percent per reappraisal, so every two years, right? And that cap is lower than what we had, had in our forecast and what has been historic in the past in terms of property tax revenue growth. And so with, with that new forecast in mind, we saw that there was a $6 million structural deficit imbalance where revenues were going to be lower than expenses. Now, because of good fiscal responsibility and budget management of the past few years, we have reserves. We plan reserves for disasters, recessions, shortfalls, and those, those reserves are used to cover the year-to-year funding needs, capital costs, and deficits as they come up. But that structural deficit is not sustainable forever and has to be rebalanced so that our reserves do not go eventually to zero. So the $6 million gap is that structural deficit in the long-term forecast, the revenues being shorter than the ongoing expenses. And so we'll, we'll get into all the details of what that means and what we're going to do about it, but that's kind of the context around what I mean when I say a budget gap.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Okay. So the budget calendar, budget kickoff happens in April. We do strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges assessment. We go out to all the departments and service categories and we provide you with their feedback. We have a work session and then you all set the initial budget targets, general fund support needed for every department. Then over the summer, departments develop their budgets, they prepare service proposals. This year, we also looked at reductions. In July, you all reviewed compensation recommendations and data analysis from Human Resources. August is the deadline from departments to us for, for them to submit their budget requests, their base budgets, and their capital plans. And then all through September and beginning of October, County Manager, Budget Director, our office, and the fiscal staff and department leadership of every single department, every single elected office, we, we get together in this room and we review every budget line. We look at all the positions, position changes, all the proposals, what's going on with data, performance measures, review every program. And then we meet with you. We have budget retreats, we receive direction, where, where do we need to go? We review the forecast if there's any updates over the summer. And then by October 15th, we have our statutory deadline. We must submit a proposed budget. And so that was published last week before the deadline. And so then today's meeting is really about reviewing what's in that proposed budget, having a, a public meeting where we can, we can show what decisions have been made. So looking forward to the, to the rest of the year, November 4th is Election Day. There, I think, are a few items on the ballot that could impact the adopted budget. Those items, those revenues are not in the proposed budget. We do not assume anything before it, before it happens. November 10th, there will be a, a formal public hearing on the proposed budget and also potential new landfill fees and rates for 2026. That will be in the hearing room here at 200 West Oak at 6:00 PM on November 10th. I think that's a Monday. Then we will have another budget retreat with the Commissioners, receive final direction on any items that have changed, come before the board sends the proposed budget on October 15th was released. And then December 11th, you all will vote on whether to adopt the budget resolution as well as certify the mill levies for the coming property tax year. So that's the calendar. Any questions on the calendar? Okay. So we started talking about this already, but this, this was a year of reductions. We're seeing pressures on the state budget. There, there have been multiple meetings on, on state programs and their forecasts.
Pause you just a moment, Matthew. I'm sorry, Justin Kishir Kofalas was hoping we could maybe show the fiscal factors up on the other slides for the video feed, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Matthew. Sorry, proceed.
Yeah, no, you're, and so just there, there are pressures on the state and, and federal government, federal government shutdown right now. There was major legislation around Medicaid and social programs that we administer. And so those pressures at the state and federal level are, are impacting our programs. In terms of the forecast, property tax revenues are the county's biggest and most flexible revenue. And we've seen residential property values, which are the biggest part of property tax revenues, they're flat. There's a little jump in commercial. Just an update, we finally got the summary of the Board of Equalization Appeals and Recommendations. And there was a six, roughly six and a half percent value adjustment down, which was pretty close to prior years. Now, many of those were commercial properties, which have a higher assessed value than residential. So we'll have to see what that means for the final certification, which is released in December from the Assessor's Office, but pretty close to being in line with prior And then like I mentioned, property tax revenue is capped at 10 and a half percent per reappraisal cycle. Looking forward to 2027, the 2027 reappraisal for 2028, that, that data is actually the growth of values from 2024, July 2024 to July 2026. So we're, we're actually well in, into that, at least the, the data of the growth. So we're getting an idea of what that reappraisal could look like. And we are only projecting 2% growth, including new construction. So we're not anticipating any, any big jumps in value, which that could change between now and, and July, you know, property values can swing. But all that's to say, we are forecasting and have identified a $6 million budget gap for this budget, hoping to achieve that savings by 2027. I'm happy to say that we did identify a significant part of that $6 million gap, the savings that we needed to achieve. And we'll go over the details, but over $3 million in budget reductions, 310,000 in new revenues, and then through efficiencies and, and just the fiscal stewardship, the being good stewards of taxpayer dollars by departments, we saw $700,000 less than what we were expecting and forecasting in service proposals. And so all that together helps close that $6 million gap. So there's still work to do. There will need to be additional savings identified for 2027, but we are on our way.
And I'll say, we budget for service proposals knowing that things cost more, services cost more. The state may have new requirements they place on us. And so we have a bit of money set aside as we plan the budget and we draw down from that over time. So as we look at our budget forecast, that is, we assume that will be used and that will carry forward into the future. And because we didn't have the $700,000 in service proposals that we expected, that is ongoing savings. So that is why that's, that's here. It's not a one-time thing. It is an ongoing expense that we are avoiding, is how we would look at it. So I know part of it is how much are we reducing? How much are we, we increasing our revenues? But this piece is really key, and that is to the, to the honor of the departments and elected offices, because they, they figured out ways to absorb those additional costs in many, many places, which made this possible.
So I won't go through every single one of these, but I'll highlight some of the reductions. You've, you've seen these and provided direction that we should reduce these out of the, out of the department budgets. The biggest one is phasing out the Community Corrections General Fund transfer. This is going to be phased out over multiple years. The Community Corrections Program is pursuing Medicaid insurance reimbursements for their treatment programs especially, and are hopeful that by increasing the bed counts and finding those, those revenues, that we can offset the difference in cost that we are currently transferring into this, the state partially funded but locally run Community Corrections Program. So this $1.7 million is the current general fund transfer into the Community Corrections Program.
So this one's a big number, but it's also exciting because what it means is the clients who leave Community Corrections are already qualifying for Medicaid. They can continue whatever care they're receiving through our, our department out into the community. And so they don't have to qualify for Medicaid after they're released from the program, which is oftentimes a 90-day gap. So we think this is both good financially for the county, but also really good for the clients as well.
The second one, $622,000 in savings. A lot of credit needs to go to the Clerk and Recorder's Office. They did their own zero-based budgeting approach. They went to their each program, motor vehicle, recording, elections, and they asked to try and build a budget that met their needs, but was just from the ground up, zero-based. And they were able to, to find a significant amount of savings. Third one on the list, shifting the eviction prevention program to a federal funding source. So there are some remaining one-time ARPA dollars that are going to cover these programs in 2026. And if they are to continue in 2027, we'll need to find an alternative funding source. So we are removing these from the, the forecast. The fourth item was reducing employee stipends, especially around wireless phone stipends. The, in reviewing those stipends, the level maybe was out of line with the market based on what smartphones and data plans used to cost a few years ago. And then also aligning our workers' compensation wage continuation policy with state statute. And then, you know, some of the tougher reductions, eliminating funding for the home share and Laramo Home Improvement Program. These were non-statutory housing programs, reducing support for consolidating and eliminating advisory boards, again, looking at, you know, what statutory, what's required by state law for us to do, and see if we can go meet that without extras or above and beyond what's required. The County Commissioners Office, our office, found identified reductions in projects. We are going to update our own county code hosting website, so we'll no longer pay a vendor to do that. I think there's some events that the County Commissioners Office has sponsored that will no longer be put on, including the annual boards and commissions reception.
There's also a good portion of, one, Public Affairs FTE position that we're eliminating.
A position was eliminated. Their roles are going to be shifted to contract services.
And more of a team approach.
More of a team approach, savings there, eliminating some of vacant FTE there. Any questions on the others? The number gets smaller as we go down the list. None of these were unneeded or unnecessary, but this is what direction we received and ultimately what was a part of the 2026 proposed budget for reductions.
I want to give some special kudos to Clerk Tina Harris, because she really, she held some positions vacant to see if they were necessary. So she didn't do these reductions lightly. She wanted to make sure there was a reasonable impact on customer experience, on her staff, on how they conduct business. She also has made some efficiency improvements with some software along the way and wanted to see how those worked out and was fully committed to, to providing this reduction to the budget process this year. And then on the home share and Laramo Home, Love, Laramo Home Improvement Program, the home share program had a very low take rate, and so setting that money aside was not really, it was not being used as we had hoped. We, I think Fort Collins has come to the same conclusion, and so those two formal programs are kind of falling aside. And then the Laramo Home Improvement Program is being funded, receiving more funny, funding from Prop 1, what is it, HB 123, the housing legislation. And so we're needing less and less outside funding to begin to fund those. So these were two that, both the metrics and the, the funding sources made it possible to continue at least the Laramo Home Improvement without county contribution. Okay.
Okay. So we'll move to revenues. Now, there are not a lot of revenues within the general fund that are flexible. Most are statutory. They, we are, we charge what is allowed by state statute. But we did review everything and, and we identified three possible revenues that, that could have been increased. One was, we currently did, do not charge a renewal fee for short-term rental licenses. And so community development is looking to implement that going into 2026, and they anticipate $50,000 in additional revenue. Our morgue, over on Prospect, is a good facility. It has a x-ray machine, and it is used by rural counties in Colorado, Wyoming, Nebraska, where the, kind of the closest place to a lot of those locations. And we do charge a fee, but it had not been updated in six years. So they, I think this has already come to your agenda to update that in line with inflation. Then our IT department is excellent, and they have developed some custom software for managing boards and commissions, managing clients with different programs. And so they are looking to partner with other local governments in Colorado to share the cost of this very custom software that local governments and especially counties in Colorado use. And so those are the three revenues that help, help us close that gap. Any questions there? Okay, moving to service proposals. We did have $14 million requested in, in service proposals in 2026. 4.8 million was included in the 2026 proposed budget. Like I said, 2.3 million of that is ongoing, which is below that $3 million expected forecasted amount. So there's, there's some savings there. And then also 2.5 million in one-time projects. We, when we review and make recommendations on service proposals, we're always looking at, is this helping us meet existing obligations in, in statute? Is it helping us do something more efficient? Is it in line with the strategic plan, your strategic priorities? And then we also look at the data. How many people does it serve? What are the outcomes? So those are the, some of the criteria that, that go into reviewing service proposals and also the recommendations and the conversations we have with you all at budget retreats. So we'll go through the list.
So we do ask departments and offices, if they have a need, they should make a service proposal for it. We don't discourage requests for additional funding. They then tell us how critical is that service proposal to meeting the, the need that they have identified. And so, so you see a lot of service proposals not funded, and that is through conversation with these offices and departments to understand what is the, what's the pain point they're trying to solve? What will this do? Will this add a service? Maybe this isn't the year to add a service. Maybe there's a grant going away and they want to, to float the service till they can find a new grant or figure out if they maintain the service. There are lots of reasons why, why departments and offices ask for service proposals.
Commissioner Kofalas.
Thank you. Matthew, you alluded to this a moment ago in building on the comments of our County Manager. Can you say a little more about the service inventory review that we did and how that helped inform the services that we provide and where there might be some discretion and so on?
Yeah, so I did neglect to mention that we've had a, a program service inventory conducted last fall and into the, the winter with every department. And this is, you know, it's often used in, in priority-based budgeting or zero-based budgeting where you go through every program and you identify the funding source, you identify whether it's statutory, mandatory, discretionary, which means the Commissioners, you have the discretion of whether to fund it or not, or administrative. And then identify also the funding source. So, you know, for example, a, a solid waste program is funded by solid waste landfill fees. We're not going to identify savings for property taxes in eliminating some solid waste program, right? So identifying solid, or the funding source along with every program. And so along with these service proposals, we did review with the County Commissioners, the Board, that service inventory, and, and that review process was a bit more comprehensive this year. And some of the reduction proposals that, that were reviewed and what were recommended came out of that, that process. Yeah.
That's a really good point. So... So the county is an arm of the state, and so the state does say, we must do certain things, provide certain services. In some cases, they tell us to what degree and how to measure it. In other cases, they say, we must do it. And so where there was not a measure, the departments then went back and looked to see, are we doing more than is required? Are we putting more staff than we need to, to meet the requirement? And in the year when we're looking for $6 million, it's important to think like that. That doesn't mean no program will ever get added again, but certainly once we've, once we've right-sized to meet the $6 million reduction, we can begin to look and see which of those services are more harmed by these reductions.
And as I recall, one of the categories that we considered was where it wasn't required or mandatory, but we also wanted to empower the employees and the department had to say, well, how important is this? What kind of an impact is it having on the people we serve? So that was also some of the input that we received, and I think that's important.
We also received a lot of really good ideas from our staff directly. So not only did we engage the leaders, but there was a whole process where staff could submit ideas and did so in great numbers, so we appreciate that as well. Everybody seemed like they were part of trying to solve this problem this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the service proposals, these, you know, we use the, this is budget链 go service proposal. It's really a budget supplement or a budget request that's approved, it's added to a base budget, right? So the base budgets, like I mentioned, are set by you in May, service proposals are reviewed, and then these numbers are the amounts added to those bases. The largest service proposal that is included in the 26 proposed budget is for human services. This is $1 million that is set aside in, as a transfer from non-departmental general fund into that program. If you remember, the human services programs are allocated on a state fiscal year, and so there's a closeout process every summer. The county operates on a calendar fiscal year, and so we have a closeout process every January, February. And so the plan with this $1 million is to see, to do two checks. One, at the very start of 2026, to see how county's fiscal year '25 turns out, that'll be midway through the state fiscal year. And then again, next August, September, after the state closeout process for these programs. And the goal is to keep them whole. Human services costs have been rising more quickly than state and federal allocations for these programs. And the human services director, Heather O'Hare, has made a lot of progress in identifying savings and efficiencies and how can they continue to provide the service at lower cost. But that really is at a point where they don't have any more flexibility or savings they can identify within their program. So that's what that $1 million is budgeted for. It may be less than that, we will see. There are also, just as a preview, potential costs related to the new federal legislation for verifying eligibility that'll come in '27. So that number you see here, $1 million, does not include potential costs for that. The next one is grade changes across multiple departments. These came in recommended by HR, kind of late in the budget process, they just had new data. I can think of, you know, county attorneys, engineers, professional positions that are specialized like that were included there. Radio replacement, digital storage, this is a IT capital replacement program that was short. The cost of radio replacement has been rising more quickly than our base budget target increases, and we have hundreds of radios that are used by the sheriff's office in Roden Bridge. And so that budget supplement there covers that rising cost. Also, the rapid increase of digital evidence and storing that digital evidence every time there's a crime and a prosecution, I would say often, not every time, a phone is seized as evidence and they will download the entire terabyte of data from that phone, and then we store it. Right, so those two issues are contributing to that service proposal. And then technology efficiency projects, these are the projects overseen by the IT steering committee to try to improve how we do things, make things more efficient countywide. And they have more projects than they have dollars. And the others, you know, are less than $100,000. I don't know if you have any questions or you want me to go over any of those?
I have a quick question. And maybe this is not related, but when I see the technology efficiency and you talk about IT things and this facility modernization, I'm assuming costs for cybersecurity and those protections has gone up, and I'm wondering, is that in here or what does that look like? Or are we able to keep up with the threats? I'm curious about that.
You know, we had a good conversation about that. We are. We have two staff members who are assigned to the area. They follow this very closely, and to date, we have enough funding for the upgrades we need to make. Many of them are patches from the software we already have, and so they come to us automatically. Those two folks apply those patches and monitor the system. So in terms of cybersecurity, we are. I think we're doing a very good job. That's a small team that, I don't know how they sleep at night because there's so much going on.
Well, thank you for that. And I always make that joke, I tell them, thank you for your work, so I can sleep at night. Maybe you can't sleep at night, but I'm sleeping at night knowing that you're doing this work, which is, which is not funny because it is very critical work. And I just remember we had had a brief conversation earlier in the year, so I just wanted to kind of circle back on that to see, because I think some of these costs, expenses, not only with, so the tariffs or the inflation or some of these other things, and this comes from the conversation I just came from down in Denver, it seems there might be a rush on another pressure on construction and things because of the, some of the ending of the credits and things, and that might put some pressure on other things. And there's some new law about foreign entities, stuff, all of that, I'm sure you all know about that. So I'm just curious about what that does to our costs, so that's why I wanted to ask that question. So thank you for.
It's a great question, and we're always concerned about facility security and cybersecurity. And so, like anybody else, like your home budget, we make trade-offs. We don't do some things so that we can do the things that are critical. Those are critical, those are the basic needs of the county. This additional $100,000 are really investments into the future of the county so we can get more efficient. We have a lot of departments looking at how they do their work, and best example is the clerk's office has a telephone screening scheduling system now that they didn't have before. So that used to take a whole bunch of people sitting at a desk, working with calendars, making paper photocopies. Now this system helps the individual schedule their own hearing, pulls all the data together, and produces a file onto a laptop. So you can imagine the efficiency that comes from something like that, and that's just one small example of the kind of things that come to the ITSC.
Thank you for that. That's helpful and reassuring, and I think those are some of the unseen expenses and costs, but important infrastructure and protections that we have, and I also wanted to bring some light on that, that we do really, I know we do a really good job, but I want to make sure those are sometimes monies that are extremely important and needed.
Yes.
So thank you for, thank you for all of that, Loretta, and thank you, Matthew, for letting me pause that.
So the one-time proposals, we differentiate between one-time and ongoing because, like I mentioned, the forecast. So these are generally capital projects, but don't have to be. The first two are capital, so facility security modernization. This relates to the door readers, the physical security of the building, integrating the systems with the security cameras we have, making sure the software, the backend, is able to track which employees have access to which facilities, and making sure that everybody has the right access and does not have access to places they don't need to be.
And as the county usually does, we have squeezed our money's worth out of the current software, and it is absolutely time to modernize that. That's another long-term, both security and efficiency measure.
Thank you.
New judges' chambers, I'll keep going. New judges' chambers, this is at the Justice Center across the street, $70,000 for a small remodel for the new judge that is being assigned to us. And then the last two one-time service proposals that are part of the 26 proposed budget, property abatements, cleanups, this is for code enforcement. In theory, the code enforcement fines cover the cost of these abatements. In practice, the court process often takes a few years to recover the costs. So this is a one-time pot of money to ensure that those cleanups can continue without delay. And then regional workforce marketing, no co-ready, you all had a work session on this, $25,000 is included in the budget. One-time basis, the direction we received from the commissioners was to only add it for '26, and with the expectation that some performance measures and some results are brought to you during the year in order to renew that going forward, so that would need to be re-requested.
And this is a large effort, you might recall. This is the northern Colorado region, so it's Laramore County, Weld County, Fort Collins, Loveland, Greeley. When you do a search on northern Colorado, you often get things about fires and floods and not some of the really cool things we're doing. And so this will be work we all contribute to, to try to change that. So when folks do ask about northern Colorado on Google or other search engines, better things come up than fire and flood.
Thank you. I think that's someone who knows about that and plays around a little bit, that I understand the importance of that, and it's very interesting sometimes what pops up on searches. So you have to sometimes dig deep to look for really things that you're looking for, but thank you for explaining that, that's important.
So I wanted to touch on the capital improvement plan. In the budget, we do have a five-year plan of capital investments. Many of these are not part of the general fund, you'll see them in solid waste, the ranch, we do have some facilities, and then Roden Bridge Transportation Master Plan. So just to update you all on the emergency services building, I did speak with the project manager on this, and the expectation is still to open mid-year 2026, early September is like kind of the occupancy goal, and it's currently on track to be within budget, you know, knock on wood and all that. It's a $12 million is budgeted in 2026 of the $30 million total project budget. That is underway. Then the ranch master plan, I would encourage folks to go to the ranch master plan website talking about Phase Two. I can give you some highlights. Key projects include a new convention center, hotel accommodations to support events, a great lawn, amphitheater, arena enhancements, youth sports complex within a refurbished event space. The goal of these investments is to have the program be sustainable by the time the sales tax expires in 2039. There is currently a 1 point or 0.15% sales tax that supports community events and programs at the ranch and capital. And the goal would be to have the event center pay for itself by 2039.
And just to note, none of these detract from the community events that are already happening there. These would be in addition to, and so we still will have a strong 4-H presence, a strong nonprofit presence at the ranch as we always have.
Thank you for emphasizing that, I appreciate that.
Yeah. The, just to preview, some of the numbers you're going to see in the following slides are impacted by the ranch. In 2025, in the revised budget, they issued debt. I guess it's not debt technically, it's certificates of participation, financial, financing mechanism to help pay for these capital projects. And that was $110 million in certificates of participation. And so you'll see in the revised budget, transfers and proceeds from that financing, and then in '26, the repayment and the transfers back into the certificates of participation fund start to occur.
And for the listening public, those are restricted to those projects at the ranch, they cannot be used for other purposes.
Yep. Then the North Landfill Transfer Station, these, again, these costs aren't part of the general fund, they're entirely covered by landfill fees. Big impacts to starting those facilities, we're hiring drivers, purchasing equipment. New transfer station will be located at the Taft Hill location, so new transfer station manager, big investment to get those facilities up and running in Q1 of 2026, last I checked. And then finally, Transportation Master Plan. If you've seen online Laramore On The Move, this plan outlines roadway, bicycle transit, and safety projects. So there is a funding gap between what the projects are called for in that master plan, what's needed, and then what's available in funding, and we'll know more about whether and how much of those projects can be built after the election, and we find out whether voters approve or disapprove the sales tax proposal. So those are the big capital items. Did want to point out, and we touched on it already, there were more service proposals and more requests than funding, as there always is. Some of the major unfunded needs remain with facilities. There's a major Justice Center facility need, potentially up to over $200 million that was called for in the facilities master plan. The gap in road capacity, if this sales tax does not pass, is up to $17 million a year. And then the gap between requested service proposals in '26 was, between what was requested and funded, was $9 million. So we'll continue to do more with less, but in many cases, we will just have to do less with the funding constraints that we have.
And those conversations and work with departments and offices continue, so just because we've got a proposed budget for 2026 does not mean that we're not continuing to work with departments and offices on reductions. These were the things that they felt confident in this year, that's why the goal is by 2027 to have achieved this goal. So Matthew, Alex, and Josh have spent a lot of time with departments and offices and will continue to.
Okay, so the moment you've all been waiting for, the actual numbers in a table. We break out the budget by revenues and expenses, and then we call them roll-ups, they're subcategories of groups of revenue types. And so we'll just walk through the different major categories. And if you have any questions about any department or specific revenue that you're, you have a question about, Alex has every single budget line pulled up, ready to dig into a detailed question, should you have it. But, so first, talking about property taxes. Property tax revenues will increase 7.5% overall. This includes Laramore County plus the Weed District and all the improvement districts that are managed by engineering. All those revenues together total almost $212 million in 2026. Sales and use tax is projected to decline by 1.2%. We are trending a little bit below our 2025 budget, so we're trying to still be conservative in '26, but this is down. We're seeing many of our city partners or municipalities adjusting their budgets for sales tax down as well, but only slightly. We will continue to monitor the general economic situation with the state and the country on this number and adjust as needed. Intergovernmental, some of this decline, so you see it's a decline of 14%, is due to the end of one-time projects that we had federal partners on. So for example, if Natural Resources purchases some land and we have a joint and we have a joint partner with, you know, say the City of Fort Collins that participates in that City of Loveland, they will send, and where the fiscal agent will have an intergovernmental revenue, they'll help pay for that, that project, that acquisition. So that, that's falling off. And so some of the decline is projects like that. FEMA reimbursements would be another example, where we're expecting and we're receiving reimbursements for the 2013 flood in '25. Those are not, no longer budgeted in '26. But despite those, there are declines in intergovernmental grants with the Sheriff's Office, Human Services, Health Department, Economic Workforce Development. And that relates back to the pressures on the state and federal governments that we're seeing. Licenses and permits, this category covers camping permits, planning permits, development fees, restaurant licenses that go towards health inspections. And those are projected to increase by just under 6%, up to twelve million. Then external charges for services, these are the fees that you pay for services, like when you go to the landfill to drop off your old couch. If you go to a event at the ranch, there's a fee there. And those are also expected to rise 6%. Interest earnings, and we may see a '25 budget revision, or we're gonna exceed that budget. But we had been expecting interest rates to go down more quickly than they have. They've stayed high for, you know, until now. And what that's allowed our treasurer to do is they've locked in higher interest-bearing investments with the cash reserves that we have. So we don't just put our, our general fund reserves and our county reserves into a savings account. The treasurer invests those in, they're generally conservative, but interest-bearing accounts. And so because it's a rolling basis, and the longer that interest rates stay high, the more of the reserve can be invested in those types of accounts. We're seeing a jump in interest earnings. So nearly fourteen million, just five or six years ago, this was around five or six million. So significant jump. And then finally, internal and other revenue, I explained this poorly last year, but if you transfer money from your savings account to your checking account, you'll see a revenue and an expense. It's really your, it's all your account, so your, the money in your bank doesn't change. It just goes from one fund to another. And that's what we're doing here with internal revenues. These are, you know, transfers, for example, the ranch will transfer money into a certificates of participation fund. That'll be an expense in the ranch budget, and it'll be a revenue in the fund budget, in the COP budget. And so those are declining due to just changes in capital programming and transfers.
So that was my question, is it's decreasing due to these changes? Was this expected, or was there anything unexpected there?
Yeah, so in '25, it's really the ranch. The certificates of participation fund received the one-hundred-and-ten-million-dollar proceeds. All of that was transferred over into the ranch capital fund. In '26, that, that big transfer is no longer budgeted, right?
That's what I was wondering, that's, thanks for confirming that. Commissioner Kofalas.
Thank you. Matthew, Alex, would you explain, can you explain further? The revenue category, property taxes and assessments increasing seven and a half percent, when earlier you indicated that as a result of state law changing in 2024, we could only, we could not exceed 10.5% over two years. How come we, 10.5 divided by two is 5.25, how can we increase by seven and a half?
Okay, so the reappraisal is for every two years.
Yes, I know.
So this is still under the 10.5 cap. Also, new construction is excluded from the cap, but it is included in our growth. And so there was a little bit less than 2% growth in new buildings, new homes, remodels. And then although residential values were roughly flat, commercial values were up, some as high as 20%. The assessor's office identified new, new sales data. And, and so that increase is largely due to non-residential values and the growth in new construction.
Yes, I, I understand that. But for folks who may be listening, so if this is what we are suggesting for 2026 proposed budget, that percent change, in 2027, does that mean in order to be under that 10 and a half percent cap, we could not exceed the difference?
So it would be in 20, as part of the 2028 budget, the combined 2027 growth and 2028 growth. So for example, next year, there's no reappraisal. The only growth that we will see is due to new construction, right? So that'll be closer to 1 or 2% growth.
So Matthew, we see growth in the reappraisal year. We see less growth in the non-reappraisal year, which makes the, it doesn't exactly divide in half, is the answer.
Right, right.
Plus any new construction that may, may come on board.
Right.
In 2027, when we do that budget, how much can the property tax revenue grow? So is the two-year cap, does that apply in 2028 budget year? Can you keep going with this?
Yeah, so the, the values won't grow in, in 2027, other than new construction. So property tax revenue could, could increase by 1 or 2%, but there won't be, the new construction does not apply to the cap, right?
So if we had 11% growth in a reappraisal year, we would only be able to take 10 and a half percent of that for revenue, and the next year we would have to stay flat.
Correct.
Because we hit the two-year cap.
Correct.
So that's how, we compound that, minus any new construction.
And we're not anticipating that 11%?
And we're, we're anticipating 2, maybe 2%. Yeah, so we're not, we're not gonna hit the cap. Okay. Let's go to expenses. Same concept, we divide up the expenses into large object categories. So just starting with personnel, this is rising 2.8% due to the market and merit increases as recommended by HR. Employees that are at the top of the range, they only move for a cost of living increase, we call it a market increase. They don't receive the merit, so that's why, even though the board has directed a 2% increase on market and a 3% increase on merit, you're not seeing a 5% total increase. Also, the merit increase is applied on the anniversary date of an employee's, their hire date. And also, just want to touch on FTE count. There, there's roughly 2,200 regular FTEs at Larimer County. And there's a net increase of 15.45 in the 2026 proposed budget, so less than 1% of an increase in FTE count. Human Services is eliminating, I think, whoa, that was... Human Services is eliminating, I think, thirteen positions. Solid Waste is adding 20, and so there's, there's some balancing there. Some positions are being converted from limited term to regular. But generally, staffing levels are, are pretty flat, less than 1%. Then on the operating budget, this category's down due to the end of one-time expenses in the Disaster Recovery Fund and road construction contract budgets, which are categorized as operating. These will be rolled forward into 2025, if, or from '25 to '26, if they're unspent. There's still an outstanding bill of up to five million dollars for the Cameron Peak Fire that we could owe the state, that we haven't, haven't paid out yet. We've got it budgeted in '25, we don't have a budget in '26. So that's what's contributing to that decrease in the operating account.
It often, it often takes the state several years to let us know what our share of the disaster recovery was. So we're, we hold it aside, we plan to spend it based on a calculation that we've done internally.
And then just overall, net budgets were increased, net operating budgets targets were increased by 2.5%. So that, that's what's generally increasing with the ongoing, ongoing costs. Capital outlay, up 43%. This is what I was trying to warn you about. This is really the ranch. Certificates of participation are up 48%. You can see this is the, the new repayment that is increasing from '25 to '26, and that's to help pay for the, the capital programming that's gonna come down in '26. And then the other financing uses, these are those transfers. So again, in 2025, we had big transfers, in '26, it's more back to normal. We do transfers from the general fund to facilities and to community corrections, right? So those, those are still in the 2026 proposed, proposed budget at about fifty-one million dollars. So the change, despite the swings in the categories, is slightly down, less than 1% from 757 million to 751 million. And again, Alex has all the answers to all the detailed program questions that you could ever desire.
I should have prepared more, I could have come up with a pretty tricky, almost trivia question in my brain, when you said that he was prepared for anything. I've been trying to think of something very unique, so I'm still working on that. Can't let Alex get away with.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the proposed budget, 751 million dollars in expenses. That, that'll be in the, in the headline that we write up with Public Affairs.
And that is all combined funds, so that is...
That's all combined funds.
Not the just, the general fund.
Yeah, solid waste, behavioral health, natural resources, all the improvement districts, everything, even the internal transfers expenses to ourselves. The net budget, so we do, we do track what, what is the budget without disaster spending, which can fluctuate, capital projects, and then these internal transfers. And so that is increasing from 435 million to 447 million, which, you know, is about a 4% increase. But that, that's kind of the ongoing systematic budget. I think that's all I have on the budget itself. Any questions before we move to the forecast?
Commissioner Kofalas.
Sure, thank you for accommodating me. So in looking at the 2025 budget brief document that you all were kind enough to prepare some hard copies for me to share with folks, I seem to recall that the overall operating budget for 2025, when that document was produced, which I know things changed, and that's probably the explanation, but I think it was like 700 million and 430 was operating, and this suggests 757 million. Would you be kind enough to explain the difference?
Yeah.
Maybe Alex could do it, let him do it, since he has all the answers.
It's the difference between the adopted and the revised budget. So in the spring, we do a, we do a carryover process. So Alex will have to find some examples while I'm talking. But in the spring, we do, we do a rollover. So if there's a big capital project that didn't quite, the bills didn't quite go out or didn't finish, there was some delay, that project will be rolled forward, and so the unspent funds from, from the prior year will go forward, and that's...
And I appreciate that, and I mostly understand all of this, but I just want to make sure if folks are listening, that they understand, if they see differences in numbers, but why is that?
Yeah.
It's a really good point, because very rarely does a capital project start on January 1st and end on December 31st. I think it would be a miracle if that ever happened. Usually, projects start in the warmer weather, especially construction projects, and then they will continue on for 12 to 18 months. So they will carry forward, and you all will set aside the full project amount, and we will carry the balance forward until the project is complete.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the majority of the, the difference there comes from capital projects, with the about 36 million dollars, and then there's about 14 million dollars of disaster expenditures in the revised 2025 budget that were not there in the 2025 adopted budget. Only 4 million dollars for the, the net operating, which I think we, we covered there.
And if all goes well, forgive me, if all goes well, on December 11th, we will be adopting the proposed 2026 budget as well as the revised 2025 budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. First, with this federal shutdown, I know we have some federal pass-throughs, are we tracking kind of separate category, kind of those impacts in case we have to adjust things, and also expenses? But also, this might be impacting some sales tax revenue? So are you tracking that right now as we look, as we're going for this proposed budget that might impact the end of 2025 for revise? I'm just curious about some of that.
Yeah, I might have to follow up with you on the details, but it is being tracked. We, we, it's a group chat within the depart, because there's so many departments. But I know Human Services is keeping a very close eye on their programs. There could be some impacts in, start of November to their, their programs. And we haven't done any budget amendments related to the shutdown at this time. But we are monitoring the programmatic impacts at the very least.
I think that's a great way to say it, and, and we know that the, the state and the federal governments are both looking at trying to, to adjust their budget amounts. And we're looking at grants that we get through the federal government, through the state. We're making sure that we can still count on those to run programs or to provide services that we do on behalf of the state or the federal government. So I think Bureau of Land Management, our Natural Resources Department, has quite a few grants from them. We're in great contact to make sure those remain intact and that projects and services that they fund will be in place. We talked about Human Services and some of our social programs. Economic and workforce development is another one of those examples. So tracking is probably at this point, it's too soon to track, but we are monitoring, and conversations are happening with this team to make sure we understand what that means. If bigger things happen, like the federal government closes an office that is in Fort Collins, that will probably have an impact on sales tax and on other kinds of, of revenue, certainly on the community. And so those are the broader kind of issues we're, we're tracking, but we don't really have a table where we can show that to you quite yet.
Just to add to your...
Sure.
I greatly appreciate you bringing that up, of course. And just another aspect of this that comes to mind is with the pending suspension of SNAP benefits, food assistance, and how that, you know, let people shopping, not able to buy their groceries, and that would have an economic impact ripple effect. But all of the sales and use taxes exempt groceries, so that's something to keep in mind, and other, other essentials.
Yeah, I knew that, just thinking about other sales tax people coming to travel. We have a lot of tourism economy and thinking about that. So... Looking at, we have all these capital projects, and we have the, I know this is pretty complex, but we have the closure of the landfill, and we have the opening and construction of the transfer center, which I drive by every day, so it like prompts questions, and then the new, how... How is, how is those two budgets, between the closure budget, is that, is that a separate line item than the transfer station and some of those other things? Are those related, are those impacted by anything against each other? Or are people bringing, I'm assuming maybe people can't afford taking things to the landfill if they're having trouble, and maybe they're gonna dump things on the side of the road instead. So I'm just, just kind of anticipating what some of these impacts... So I'm just, just kind of anticipating what some of these impacts we might start seeing some behaviors is because people can't do that. And I live out in Corporate Laramie County, so people dump things on the corner of the pasture all the time down the road. So I'm curious about that. So here's a line item question for Alex.
There are, there's, there are two capital projects related to the landfill. There's closure projects and there's opening projects. I know they've committed $5 million into purchase of equipment. And do you want to look up the closure, the capital projects there?
Then I would say, well, he looks this up. One of the, one of the things about the county's landfill is it's used by haulers in addition to individuals. And the haulers are the ones bringing in the big garbage trucks full of material. And that is where the bulk of the revenue comes from. It's convenient for residents to be able to bring things by, and it certainly is, is going to be an issue if people start leaving things on the side of the road. I don't know that that will have a tremendous financial impact. It will impact, I don't want to say it won't. But haulers are the ones who are bringing the bulk of the material.
Okay, that's a great point. The reason I'm asking, because not too often a board of county commissioners is looking at closure and opening a new landfill, especially one with transfer stations. So it is kind of a complex situation. And, and since it's kind of happening in two budgets, I was just curious kind of what that looks like. All right, Alex, cool.
Yeah, so do you just want to know like the cost of the closure? So for 2026, we have budgeted 500,000 for the closure. And then the remaining dollars for that project are in 2027, which we have estimated at $4 million.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. I'm just trying to also think ahead because I, people probably don't understand the complexity of, of that, along with the other complexity of opening a really state of the art, well, it is kind of emerging technology, state of the art. Landfill, which will hopefully be more of a diversion and zero waste kind of facility. So I'm, I'm just curious, looking ahead, what that, but that's already been set aside, right? And that's already.
It has, and that is its own revenue fund, and it is planned. So not only do we close the landfill in 2027 where the big expenses, but the monitoring continues for many years. So you will see a closure line item for many, many years to come as the monitoring continues.
Okay, that's kind of where I was my next question, so thank you for that. There's my line item question, so thank you.
Okay. So let's get into the forecast. We've already talked about the economy and the fiscal situation. The projection we're going to show you on general fund reserves is, you know, shows that stabilization of the, of the expenses over revenues, which is the, the reserves, the forecast of general fund reserves. But it does include an additional 2 or so million in savings. And so that's something to look forward to in, as we look to 2027, a year and a half away, that we, we still have work to do, right? So right now, we're well above what we need in terms of our forecast to general fund reserves. This also includes a, you know, a $10 million natural disaster response. This, it's not out of line with what has happened in the past. And so this, we break out the general fund into two reserves. The light green is the general fund, and then on top of that is disaster contingency. Our, just to explain the graph to folks, we have in our policy to try to be, to keep our reserves above 10% of annual expenses, but not above, above 25% of annual ongoing expenses. And so being in between this line is kind of where we want to target. If there's excess funds, they can be used on one-time projects, capital improvements, disasters. But generally to keep, to keep our county in good fiscal health, to maintain that top bond rating, we want to have healthy reserves above that 10%, but below the 25%.
And I'll say, when we collect more than you all need, in many years, you all have, have done a temporary mill levy credit. And so that's one way that we manage to keep below that, that top line. The, the green line, we like to say, we pretend it doesn't exist because we know we're going to have a disaster. We know that FEMA is a reimbursement program. We have to front the money and then get reimbursed. And so we have to have operating capital to be able to recover. So although people see it, we like to say, let's pretend it's not there because it's a matter of when that disaster occurs, not if. And certainly if you see, if we only use the light green line by 2033, we would be below our 10% should we have a disaster someplace along the way. So that is a conservative planning number that you all allow us to keep in place so that we can recover as a community.
So Matthew, thank you, Lauren. And you know how important that is to me because I know disasters are going to be even more expensive. So I'm always wondering if we should grow that disaster contingency because I think by 2031, those costs will probably be significantly higher. But I'm curious, when public is looking at this slide, in case they're watching, all the thousands of people watching today, I tried to invite some people from the meetings this morning, I kept, tune in, it's a great meeting. And it's important meeting. That general fund that's above, is that, that's kind of that higher line? Is that the COP revenue, it looks high on 2026? Is that kind of that influx of the money for the ranch? Is that what we're looking at?
So that includes just the general fund, so not the ranch.
Okay.
Surpluses from prior years. When, when we say we've been good fiscal stewards in the past, that's, that's the result that you see. What the gap we're talking about is the decline, the slope of this, of the reserves. We need to correct that and get that back to a place where it's balanced. There's a lot in this, behind the scenes of this chart we didn't mention. So in, at the end of the decade, tax increment financing districts start to expire. So there's a bunch of revenue that comes back, that's currently being diverted away at that time. And that helps also slope the curve back up.
The other thing I'll say is, the reason we can take our time and make sure that we don't permanently negatively impact service provision to the community is because we are above that blue line right now. So a, a portion of this might be some capital projects that we're paying for in the next couple of years. Think the emergency services building, that sort of thing, that is, would be the fun portion of that that would be coming out of general fund. But because of that, we can take our time and be very thoughtful about finding this $6 million gap rather than having to come up with it one time and then perhaps restore services that we, we didn't understand the impact for. So you all have been very good stewards. We are very lean as an organization. We're getting a little leaner, you'll see that as we, as we drop below the blue line. But we, we did intentionally have this cushion so that we can get to where we need to be by 2027.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kofalos, did you have any more further questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Matthew.
The other thing I'll say about this is, this is not a crystal ball. There are, if you could see the spreadsheet, hundreds of lines of assumptions that go into this. And so we're having to base those on historical trends, on what we see coming in the future. The further you get out to the right, the more of a guess that is. And so we like to show you this because we think it demonstrates over time where we're going to be. One major world occurrence could change this either way, up or down. And so folks shouldn't expect to see this exact same diagram next year, we don't know what will happen.
Yeah, and just to expound on some of those upside and downside risks is what the forecasters like to call them. So downside risks that are not in this forecast could be a recession. Job loss, loss in sales tax, loss in decline in property values could really impact our budget, right? Some of the upside risks, if values grow more than we're anticipating, more than that 2%. They haven't yet so far from 24 to 25, which is going to be included in the next reappraisal. But maybe from 25 to 26, there could be some growth. That's not in the forecast. A disaster is, so if there is no disaster and, and everything's fine, then those reserves will be added or kept in the, in the budget. So there's, like I said, it's all about what you assume, what you guess is going to happen with all forecasting. It's, it's really the assumptions that go into it that, that matter.
What I hope the public takes away though is, we are doing forecasting. We are doing long-term forecasting and short-term forecasting, and we are adjusting throughout the budget year as we need to, and certainly dealing with this revenue cap. So if there's any confidence in knowing that we're looking to the future, we're not relying on the past to predict the future. We are constantly evaluating that. This team is, has gotten very, very good at managing that.
Thank you for sharing that, that's important to know and to, for the public to understand kind of what this means. Because it's, I mean, we're used to thinking and looking at it, but I can see some people saying, oh, I see lots of money right there. But that's, it's things that are capital projects and things like.
Yes.
There are a lot, like you said, 100 over 100 lines of assumptions and things in there. So it's, it's a, it's a very telling slide, but also very complicated, so.
So I'll conclude with the opportunity for the public to participate in the budget process. If folks want to just learn about the budget, we have lots of budget details. The proposed budget is on the, the county website, laramie.org or .gov/budget. We still have the Budget Explorer tool for the 2025 budget. We'll update that in January for '26. Just add a slash explorer, so budget, laramie.gov/budget/explorer if you want to dig into the details and the lines and the program inventory. If you want to come talk to us, we're doing community conversations. We already had one in, in Wellington. We've just had a bunch added to our calendar for the coming month or so. We're going to come out to Loveland with, with you, Commissioner. All right. Breakfast, burritos, and budget. Come for the budget, stay for the burritos. The community survey, so that third bullet point, we conduct, I think, every other year. This is important because it's statistically valid. And if I recall, the top priorities pretty consistently, road capacity and traffic, public safety, and human services, which is very much in line with what, where the money goes. Then we will have a public hearing on November 10th at 6:00 PM. We've sent off the notice to the newspaper, that'll be published in the Colorado in, I think, this week. And then we will again have our vote to adopt the budget on December 11th at 10:00 AM. And both of those hearings will be in the hearing room downstairs at this building. And that's it. Any other questions or comments or feedback?
I don't have any additional questions. I just want to say thank you for your competent and very diligent work.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I mean, I asked online, but I was curious about, you know, what those costs are going to look like. And I think folks maybe don't understand it's, it's more than just moving dirt, there's a lot of costs there. Also, I do want to thank you for, you know, the work that you do year-round and trying to help us. We have a lot of budget meetings, somewhat, you know, today we're having an hour and a half meeting, but we've had handful of meetings that are hours long where we've talked about budget and looked at line items. And it's been a lot of conversations, and I know you spend a lot of time in this room talking to departments. And I think, I know you look at a lot to help with folks to see things in their budget and the efficiencies. And I, I don't, I don't think any, any of us, especially the public, or even as, as commissioners or we're not in your shoes, see all the work that you do year-round, especially the last few months to get this budget where it needs to be and to have a budget that we were able to not have drastic changes to services. We, we're still going to have some impacts, but it could have been, it could be more impactful. And, and so I, I do think a lot of credit goes to you and Loretta and, and the department heads and all, and, and Josh, you know, your whole team helping everyone navigate through very, their lot, budgets are complex, and it's very, it's very, like we just talked about revised and proposed and how that looks. And I, I just want to just tell you how much I value you all and the work that you do because you make it really easy for us to follow along and keep us apprised. I know you keep us, letting us know any kind of changes and things. And you're a great team, and I have a lot of confidence when, when you present and know that, you know, I know that you have scoured those numbers backwards and sideways and inside and out. And I, I just want to tell you how much I value you all and thank you for the, the very diligence and, and hard work because I have sat through other budget meetings and with other organizations, and it can get pretty squirrely sometimes. I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you, you do. And thank you, Loretta, for, you know, kind of shepherding this team too because I know you've done a lot of budgets over the years, and I know you give them a lot of support to, to kind of flourish the way they are. And, and so just thank you for this work today. If, you know, I wake up at 4:00 AM and think, oh, I should ask that question, I can just email Matthew and, or and just walk down the hallway and ask you a question. It'd just be great to, to kind of know. I'm hoping people, I keep asking people to be involved and ask questions because this is their money and their budgets, and, and budgets are also value statements. And so as you talked about, the surveys and community sharing that, I think it's important to the public. No, we want their input, and we want their engagement, so I hope that they will. Anyway, Loretta, would you like to say anything to wrap this up? It's just really been an interesting afternoon.
Thank you. I, I would say if the, the public is interested but can't make it to a hearing, they can certainly find all of this information on our website. They can email each of you, all of you collectively, any of us, provide that feedback, we'll make sure it gets to you. Not everyone wants to come to a meeting, but they do want to provide feedback, and we try to offer in many ways to do that. I do want to give a special thank you to our elected officials who, you know, counties are set up to be a little bit dysfunctional. You all control the budgets and they control the operations of their offices. And in some counties, that is very contentious. It is not in this county. Our elected officials are very much partners. I think that goes to the budget team and the trust that they have built over time, goes to you all. You, you make, you make friends every day, you don't wait till we need to make them. You're constantly nurturing those relationships, so there's good understanding between the elected offices and the three commissioners. And I think that makes us different. And if, if folks see things different in other counties, I think that is the secret sauce, that's why. So thank you to all of them, to all the department heads, this team in particular. You've gone above and beyond, you continue to go above and beyond, and I know it doesn't end when this budget gets adopted. It's, it's a little like laundry, I always say, the laundry basket gets empty, pretty soon there's more stuff in it, and these, these guys are figuring it out and continuing to work that, that progress all through the year. So thank you for your time, attention throughout the year, not just at this hour and a half work session, but you all are engaged throughout the year, and we really do appreciate that. Helps us to budget and to function in a way that meets your values and your goals.
Thank you. Well, I think we're, we're a great team and it's team effort, and I appreciate the ongoing dialogue and, and the candor. And I did give some shout-outs to our other electives today at a meeting and thank, because one of them was in the room, and thanked them for the partnership and gave shout-out to how well as county offices and other electives we work together on the budget to kind of give a budget update for this Fort Collins group. And it was, it was well-received. So I think that was, it is noticed and noted very, a lot by business owners that we, they, I always get compliments that they really like our budget process, so I mean, they think of. Commissioner Kofalos?
Thank you. I guess since we're in the business of shout-outs, I, I want to specify, one of the line items on the revenue side was the fairly dramatic increase in the interest that we have gotten from our investments. And I think we ought to do a bit of a shout-out for our county treasurer, who is very fiscally conservative and wise about those investments so we can get a good, safe return on the investment. And then, you know, when, in referencing the, the certificates of participation and the financing for the, for the ranch, I think we ought to shout out our finance director, Lori. They've helped shepherd that process. And the fact that we continue to have a very clean bill of health when it comes to audits and having a AAA bond, bond rating, I mean, that helps in terms of the great value that we got with those COPs that will help finance all the. all these cool things at the ranch. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I echo those comments. It is, we have some amazing folks here at Laramie County. So with that, at 3:56, we are adjourned. Have a great afternoon, everyone.